Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting, April 5th, Tuesday. And is it 7:03 calling the meeting to order? Is there public comment this evening? Do we have anyone online? That would like to speak? Do you see anybody else there, Jim?
No.
Very good. Everybody else can speak anyway, so we have you on the agenda. Thanks, guys. At this time, we have approval of minutes and it's quite extensive would be the will of the Selectmen. Can we move this later on in the agenda so we can get to our guests that are here?
Consent. Go for it.
All right, everybody seems to have consent on that. Appointments and resignations at this time, I'd like to give a heartfelt thanks to Heather Blue and wishing her very best on her next endeavors as she has left Fulton after her job very well done. And the second is reappointment of Tim Johnson to the Ethics Commission. Do I have a motion?
I have someone.
And do I have a second?
You guys.
As his hand.
Bob, did you second it? Bob, Peter, Tim Johnson?
I don't know her.
I'm sorry, is this Tim Johnson for the Ethics Commission? You know, Tim?
He was, he was one of the original members on there that put it all together.
Okay. You want second Bob, Peter? Thank you. Is there any, any comment on his reappointment? None? Can I have a, we'll go call for a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mike Aramita, did you vote?
He's still connecting to audio.
Well, we'll just have to wait for a minute then until we have. Mike Aramita, do you hear us?
He's having technical difficulties.
Bob DiPietro, you can hear us, right? Okay.
Yes.
Kathy McCava, Yvonne, and I know CDC can't respond. And we have someone on the phone? What's the one on the balance sheet?
Yeah, I don't know who it is. They joined late.
Hi, this is Quan, 23 Gold.
Hi, Quan. Welcome.
You can hear us then.
I can hear you loud and clear.
Yes, sir. Mike Aramita, can you hear us now? He doesn't have his headset on.
It's K A W.
Thank you. Still trying to get on.
All right, we'll come back to this vote so that when Mike's able to join in. So we're going to go to reports and updates. At this point, Jeff, would you like to join the table and report Jeff Bell on the Temporary Building Committee?
We're on my seat.
Anywhere.
The owl can see all the way around.
Anywhere in C D L. Okay. First of all, I want to thank you guys for adding me to the agenda. And so far, the Temporary Building Commission has met three times. The first couple of times after the initial meeting, the attendance was kind of poor, but I think we've got to resolve at this point. We've discussed a bunch of different things. We went through a site walk-through with Chief Dixon at the firehouse, you know, showed us around the building. Gives an idea of, you know, how they're operating at this point, showed us some of the modern equipment he's got in there, showed us all the vehicles and trucks and boats and all the other stuff he's got in there. We have not done a walk, a site visit of Notch Road. We were kind of informed and then that may be an issue to have a sidewalk because of safety concerns of the building. We'll try to work that through. I'm not so sure that we need to do that, but that was something that came up. Reference to the firehouse, we've had quite a bit of discussions. Some of the things we've been talking about is how big does, how big does the addition need to be? There's some physical constraints because of septic system location. There was some outstanding maintenance issues identified during our walkthrough, which included the roof is original roof in the building. It's getting to near its end of its lifetime. There's deterioration of work on the outside of the building. This interior cracking of the ceiling in the main bay of the, where all the fire equipment is stored. We discussed and put some questions forward to the town whether we need to do any code upgrades to the rest of the building once we're in there. There were some questions related to whether the existing heating system is adequate to add to square footage that we think we might need. So that's something we need to investigate. Some other problems that were pointed out to us was there's limited hot water reaching the bathrooms due to the distance from the furnace. So they're not really getting hot water unless it's leaving, running for a very long time. There was discussions about storage space and miscellaneous other things. We also talked about the overall procurement process, you know, because at some point we had to build this thing. And the typical process through most municipalities, you design it, you bid it to a contractor in your building. We've also discussed design build process net. Basically, you bring a team in consisting of a contractor in an engineering architectural type team. And they design it and build it pretty much at the same time. And we discussed the design build option because based on the information provided by Chief Dixon, as of this month, there's about 13 months until the fire truck shows up. So if we plan on getting this project done even remotely close to 13 months, design builders pretty much, you know, they can get it done. In a time and fashion, even, even with 13 months, we're not sure if we can actually get it done. Probably not. But that brings up a bunch of other questions and I'll get into the questions once I get through the rest of my thing here. Regardless of which direction we go, the commission feels we need some kind of expertise. You know, I'm an engineer, but my area expertise is going to roads and bridges, not necessarily firehouses. You know, pretty smart, but not smart enough to know what goes into a firehouse. We think we need some kind of expert to help us compare not only procurement package depending which direction we go, but to give us some guidance on the size of additions and the mechanical system upgrades that we might need to do and that sort of thing. According to my information, we can do direct select on a consultant along with them. The fee is below $35,000.
But I'm not sure where that information is coming from.
It was numbers that were thrown around and I heard it from a couple of different sources. That's why I'm throwing it on like, I'm not sure.
So, so there is money in the budget for hiring of experts. But there is a process by which the town has to go about procuring goods and services based on town ordinance. And typically, things of, depends on how expensive it is, but those things typically require an R F P. And then typically in the R F P, there would be language in the, in the R F P that allows the Board of Selectmen to choose an individual. It's not necessarily the lowest bid, but represents the best package for the value.
And the reason we were looking at, you know, whether we can direct select was really to try to get a consultant onboard as soon as possible to hit, you know, speed up the process. We have to go through a process. I'm not really sure how long the town takes, but typical process is at least two months. By the time you create the solicitation, advertise it.
Select one. That's probably.
On board, two months is.
That's pretty fast, actually.
Optimistic.
Right. Yep. Yep.
Optimistic.
I think you're, you're dead.
It might be a lot of work in municipalities. I generally had an idea of the procurement process. Some towns can direct select, you know, as long as your, if the number is low enough.
Right.
Not sure about this town. That's what part of it. Trying to figure out what the internal process is. And how it affects the schedule going forward. Some of the questions that we wanted to put in front of you guys, you know, if we're keeping the old truck as backup, as a spare, whatever reason, what happens to the truck and the new truck that shows up? You can't park a fire truck outside. Something's got to be done.
Well, I think that's not a, I may.
Absolutely.
Just a comment. I don't think that's, it's not, your commission doesn't have to deal with it. I mean, that's, that's our problem. First of all, the Board of Selectmen has to decide whether or not it will keep it or not keep it. That decision has not been made. I know, I know the fire, the fire department would like to keep it.
That was made very clear to us.
Right.
And if, if the town is keeping it, are we making this building big enough to accommodate the new truck and the old truck?
Right. And, and.
Because that's, that's kind of where we're trying to look at this thing.
Yep. And in our original putting this together, that really wasn't a part of what we're looking at. But since it was brought up, it's, it's something we have to look at, make a decision on. Because it makes a difference as to where you go.
Where, where we put it.
Right. And we hadn't thought about that, quite honestly. We, we, our thoughts initially, the very beginning was you get, you're replacing a vehicle. Not keeping the vehicle. So, so, no.
That's right.
I understand where you are. So. So that's something we have, we, the board have to decide so that you guys have a better, a clearer pathway.
Yep.
Mike Aramita?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
There you are. So now we can.
Yes. You have a little technical difficulty here at the house. I'm on my tablet right now. Just to speak to the question that you just talked about with the spare truck and whether it's kept or not. I, I, I don't know is where, where it would go. That's something the Board of Selectmen, if, if they board chooses to keep it or chooses to get rid of it, or, you know, decides where we'll put it in an, on an interim basis. But I think regardless of whether you choose to keep it or not, I think the building needs significant increases in size. And I think the significance, the, the, the building was built for trucks that were half the size we have now. And God only knows what we're going to have in the future. And I think you need to look at a building that would be capable of holding two engines. Whether or not we keep that, because things are getting bigger, we're getting more equipment for, like right now, we have that small trailer we just put in there to, to solve another problem. It seems as though every day there's something else that's added to the fire department's plate for things to do or handle. And they come along with equipment and, you know, the new brush truck. We could keep the old brush truck in the shed out back, but the new brush truck won't even fit in that. So, you know, you have to plan this for 50 years from now. Because, you know, it was a little short sighted when it was built because it was recommended that it be four days. And they already started planning a fourth one before it was finished construction. So, you know, had they done that, then we wouldn't be looking at this now. And, and so I think you, you have to at least look for the potential of two engines in there in the future, whether they ever happen or not. None of us can see, none of us have a perspective of look into the future, but I think you have to at least plan for that. You know, because we don't know what's going to happen.
Thank you, Mike. Bob DiPietro, do you want to comment?
Yes, this is the, now on the agenda. I think Bob Boras' point is, well, Kagan, we have to do that separately.
Thank you. Adam?
I don't have anything there.
I do. I think it's important that we look at setting the building up for the next 40 years. I don't want to be short sighted on this. I would say the board will review it at the next meeting and give you a specific definitive answer. But my view is to, it's better to have more space after having my, my tour of the firehouse and finding that when the trucks were back, backed in back to back, there was very unsafe situations of walking between them. It didn't used to be that way because the trucks were four to six feet smaller on each one. And so you had nice avenues between the trucks to be able to work on them and so on and so forth. It's not safe the way it is now. So I would say more space is better than less, but that's my point of view tonight. And we should review it at the next meeting.
With that, it brings up the issue with cost. I did a very high level cost estimate based on moving, just internet research of what typical expansion of firehouses costs based on square footage. And for the bare bones minimum, which is probably low, you're looking close to a million dollars.
Yeah. How many square feet are we talking?
I did, I did the poll out roughly 85 by, you give me a second, I'll open up Excel spreadsheet. 85 by 25.
Okay, something like that. Okay, I just want to get a sense of what.
Is that two story you're looking at?
That would be one story. It's 700, it's seven, roughly 700,000 plus incidents only gets you close to a million dollars. If you go with a second story, add about a million and a half to the top, about a million and a half on that. And then you're looking at.
Say two and a half.
Somewhere in there, two, two and a half. Then if you're looking for renovations of the existing building, basically go in there and fix up the rest, you're looking at another 1.1 million dollars. So bring up existing.
3.6. If we're going.
That's high. That's a very high level.
Okay. Mike, you had, you had your comment?
Yeah, I, you know, I, just looking at the, the potential addition with the first and second floor, I, I think your estimate's just a little bit high. I think we're looking at closer to two for the addition with the second floor. But I think you might be spot on with what it's going to take to fix what's there already. So I think you're probably looking closer to three than three and a half. But, you know, like you said, you're an engineer for roads and I'm a builder, but not, not a builder of fire stations. So, you know.
If you want the details of how it ran, the estimate I can tell you because a lot of the information was kind of dated.
Yep.
You know, some of the information came all the way back to 2013 and projected it forward at three and a half, or 3% per year until last year where I bumped it to 6% and
Oh, yeah.
2022 at 7% and another 3% for 2023 for the building here. So.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're probably right. You're, you know, with building materials have gone crazy this year. And, you know, if you're building it this year, you're going to die with the price increases. So you're right.
All right, thank you. And so what we'll do is we will get back, the, the board's consent, we'll get back to you next meeting. But the answer to that, do you have more questions for us on that particular topic?
Uh, it really boils down to the direction, you know, bare bones minimum is, you know, add one bay to the building, plus a little bit of extra room because it was, it was demonstrated that need more room between the outside wall and the nearest truck. Changing areas. Right now it's too tight. You can't even open the door in a fire truck and have somebody there changing. And so we're looking for a little bit more bay plus a little bit more. And then the extra, and then the second floor was, was demonstrated they wanted meeting space, more storage. So we're like, okay, what do you want for the second floor? So I just added in there.
Jim, do you have?
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Adam?
I wanted to ask Jeff. Before, do you need a specific decision on something before you could move forward at all? I mean, if, if it's
Well.
whether we can keep the truck.
That's a, hold that question for now.
We can decide.
Hold that question for now. Um, getting into the costs and paying for this. We threw ideas around here and I understand talking to Jim, that this project would likely be bundled with the demolition of Notch Road and several other larger projects in the, in the town, specifically high school roof or something going on over there in this, in the center school. My question to the, to the board, and maybe it's for, for finances, is that a true statement that you really looking to bundle these things together because the cost of setting up the bonding and advertising and all the other related fees that go along with that?
The board has not made a decision on that, but there have been off-table discussions that, that, that does save money.
I understand that.
And historically, that's what we have done because.
Right. And how does, how does the timing of this firehouse project tie in with the other projects?
I think the, well, the 13 month is, is.
I, I recognize that.
Yeah, that's, that's not it, but it, it can't, I mean, that's why we had to do it because it can, it can tie in.
Yes.
Depending, you know, because some of the things we're talking about are ones that, like the demolition of Notch Road, we can do that tomorrow. I mean, that'll, not really tomorrow, but in, in 2022 if we had it, but.
We haven't spent a lot of time on Notch Road.
But it can be bundled up and held.
Not too hard.
To the side, but, but these are, yeah. And, and it really becomes, you know, it's, it's always down to the dollars.
Yeah.
And when you can do it. And when, when, when is there a quote, a window where you can do this without the sharp price? And that's always somewhere with, well, when your payments drop, at least drop somewhere there's an impact. And if you have a grand list growth, it's a common, it's a whole common is it, it's not a question that is simple to answer, but the, the answer is the voters have to approve it. So.
I recognize.
That's.
Putting these things, I'm putting these things on the table. So
Yeah.
So we and you guys and the Board of Finance are on the same page.
Yeah.
Adam?
I think the best answer from us to you as.
I don't necessarily need an answer. I just need to know.
Commission is don't bite off more than you can chew. What you need to do is what you need to know is what you need to know to design and plan out a building. The rest of the stuff is either the job of this or, or the voters. And you don't have any control of that. And it really doesn't. You're, I perceive your job as designing the best building you can that meets the need that you're being asked to me.
I get that, but I'm also.
I know.
I'm looking at the fact that I'm trying to work with the board, right, Selectmen and the Board of Finance to get this thing done. Not 13 months, but not three years from now.
Right.
And somewhere in there.
I don't.
Somewhere in there, there's an answer.
And if I don't, you know, if I'm not bringing it up to you guys in the Board of Finance and I just, just happily go along, all of a sudden I say, hey, we need three and a half million dollars. You're going.
Sure. We want to know the, what's coming, but I, my, I firmly believe that when you sit on a board, you do the job of that board. And let other jobs, other boards do their jobs.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree also.
Otherwise, that leads to insanity. And I don't want. And, and.
A lot of people aren't already insane.
I'm going to choose that. Frankly, it's the leadership of the board's job to see that.
Okay, right.
That's their job.
So Jeff, do you need, you know, do you, so do you need direction from the Board of Selectmen as to what your next step is?
No, let me, I'm almost done.
Okay.
I'm almost done. I have one page in notes. That's it. I might have the last note. I brought up earlier in my presentation that there's two options. Most rapid expedited method to build this building is design build. My question to the board is, is that something that the board and the Board of Finance will let us do? Most people in this room are online and not from a design bill.
I am.
I am.
Somewhere. Is the board, is their board and the Board of Finance can be okay with that methodology? Because that would greatly speed up the process by a lot.
Let's ask, let's go backwards then. Jim Rupert, with your experience, has the town used design build and anything else that you can think of in the past?
Not, not on purpose.
Right.
There we go. So, so the, in the, in the town, the addition to the town garage is an example of that. They, they used a, a state bid process to procure a building and didn't go through the normal R F P process with a design. And it was a design build project. And unfortunately, it ran into some obstacles with code because there were really no plans at the beginning of the process. And I made it very clear, I think Mike Aramita probably heard from me, probably stronger than a lot of people, that we, that we can't do it this way again. That, that, that building just created a lot of anxiety, I believe, for the Board of Selectmen. And I will tell you for the, for the building department.
That was more an ad hoc design build.
It works. It works. And so it, it could, you know, it could work if, if it's done in an organized, controlled fashion and all of the stakeholders are at the table during the discussion phase of that. And questions like you asked, you know, are, you know, do we have to do code upgrades? Well, the answer to that is it depends, right? And that means somebody else has got to answer another question. You know, so, so, you know, all of these answers are code dependent on the answers that we start with and the information we start to collect. And so I, I think, you know, a design build project could work. But the other piece of that is, is it something that we want to do? And is it, is it necessary for time constraints? And I think that was the other part of your question.
Yes.
You know, and I, I think Adam, I'd answer that in a roundabout way, which was, you know, focus on the things that the Board of Selectmen have asked you to focus on and do it the best way you know how.
Yeah, that was pretty direct.
Jim, Jim, I have a question for you. Because you will have a change in role here shortly, not in the building department, but yet you will be administrator. Do you see design build being lining up with with what the building department will be in your vision coming up? Or do you feel that it's going the other way is a stronger way?
It's pretty, it's pretty flexible as long as they're, you know, engaged in the conversation from the beginning rather than at the end.
Okay.
Pam?
Michael?
Yeah, a quick comment on the design build and the other structure that, that Jim, you were very nice about that when you just said. The, I think Jim being in the position he holds right now can only improve things because the individual that sat there before really had no idea what building was all about and took on the reins and got the thing started before the building department was even engaged in it. And it, it was a design build, but not really a design build. The idea behind design build is that you hire one person to do the whole project, which expedites the project because you're not going through multiple agencies and not going out for R F P for a, for a design and then architect and builder and all of that. So it speeds it up, but done correctly with the proper people. And I think Jim is the person to head that up because he's, he's going to, he has the building experience and, and he'll be in the position that the other person held when the other one went terribly wrong. I think design build could work very well for us. That being said, I'd like to see a building that's done correctly and done for my lifetime and my grandchildren's lifetime here in town. And 13 months or 24 months, I don't think makes a big difference. I, I think getting it done right is the important thing. The old truck, if we keep it or we don't keep it, really doesn't play into this because we'll find someplace to put it, even if we got to put it in somebody's garage or barn for a while. We, we'll figure that out. It's not worth a lot of money. It's only worth $4,000 or $5,000. So whether we keep it or not, it may not last till we, till we get to the end anyway. So I, I think building a building that will serve us for the next 50 years for size and everything else. And I think building it correctly the first time is the way to go. Whether it's, whether it's architect and a builder or design build, I don't think should be the, the, the speed shouldn't be the priority in this. Getting it done correctly is, is the top priority. And I think it can be done either way, but don't let speed be your only guiding.
To Jim, this is a decision we have to make right this. To Jim, this is a decision we have to make right this evening, do you think?
I think it would be helpful to Jeff and his group for them to move forward.
Adam, I would I would agree with that.
Yep.
Just from the fact, let me let me throw in here my two cents and just from the fact that the approach that the commission would take would be different, obviously. If we're gonna go traditional design bid build, our next step would obviously be solicitation of a architect engineering team to assist in designing the building. If we go design, if we go design build, we develop a solicitation to put design build teams on notice and they would submit their qualifications. And from the qualifications, we we analyze the qualifications and we shortlist two or three teams. Once they're shortlisted, we give them a proposal package and they they would prepare a proposal based on a package we develop.
Adam?
Jeff, I'm not afraid of design build. I I I think I'm generally would mean that way. So I have no problem if we end up authorizing. But if we do that, I think we've got to make sure that both Town Hall and the Fire Department are aware of their responsibility to help create the the conditions for design build to work.
Right.
Meaning they have to be avail, they have to make the commitment to be available, to participate early in, to consistently respond quickly and, you know, and make their internal decisions about what they want to, you know, what they need.
Right, because when we did, when we developed.
Because you can't go backwards.
Right, because when we develop the proposal package, that's our, that's pretty much your last opportunity to to make changes or what, tell them what you want.
Right.
Without added cost.
And they have to understand that that's a front-loaded process. On point to do that. And if they're not, the outcome's not going to be as good.
Right.
And they can't complain later that it didn't matter, you know, that it turned out it wasn't what they really want.
Right.
If they're not on board and on point at the very beginning. So if you're gonna do design build, I think big red letters need to go out.
Initial solicitation, putting it on the street to get interest from design build teams is not that a good deal. The big deal is be between the time you solicit.
Right. The moment you make that decision, everybody in town has to be aware.
There's gonna be a very short period of a lot of intensity to develop the proposal package so the design build teams could develop their proposal.
And people in the relevant departments have to be empowered to respond quickly.
Yes. We gotta talk about it next month.
Right, and expected to respond quickly. And that's, that's for us to say, if we, I I'm not afraid of that. I think it's the only way to do it, frankly. I don't know. You know.
Bob Di Pedro?
Spin your wheels forever.
I'm I'm good with going either way, but I also want to bring up the fact that we are probably going to be looking at something very soon for the Town Hall. And I'm wondering if free, choose one option of going design build with a firehouse. Does that have any implications for what we'll do with Town Hall?
Jim Rupert?
So I would say it would allow us to know, Bob, whether or not we can do it and do it well. And then it would open that, and it would open that option.
Right. I'm thinking that too. I I completely agree because it's a relatively small project, very defined. If it works well, we have experience to do it the next time. If it doesn't work well, we know this.
But it also takes this project and moves along faster at so that we can refocus.
Right.
And get more focused on the Town Hall needs.
And get room on our plate. So.
The intensity initially, it's gonna be a lot, lot higher.
So.
Once, once, once you finally select the team and you're okay with the price, sort of watching them, making sure they're doing what they said they're gonna do, it's not that big a deal. If we go design bid build, which is a traditional method, solicitation, shortlist engineering, architectural teams, close review process. I'm assuming the town's okay with QBS selection qualification based selection on the architectural engineering team versus fee, or are you looking for combination of both?
Jim?
I think it's a combination of both.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have, we have a a question here on the before us that I think we have to answer sooner rather than later, uh whether you know to go design build or not. Um one of the things we do have at at our disposal is the architect who designed the building and has the plans for an additional bay that probably is too small, but has um some knowledge based on why you can't go too far. We've got all of.
Yeah, that's on, that's on our list of.
That side of the building, so. Uh with uh Alan C W Architect, um ninety South Road. Uh so we have um that I think adds to, in my view, a reason to look at design build because we have a someone in town who is retired that could actually help us as and help assist you in your in looking at some of this stuff. Mike Aramita's hand up.
Yeah, Pam, just just so you know, it appears and it is going to be the the same management team at the Fire Department next year as it is currently. And the people that are there are the ones that have been working on this right along. So I think now is a perfect opportunity to say that the the team there is is ready to help in any way we can and to be able to work quickly and make decisions quickly. Because, you know, a volunteer fire departments, sometimes there's turnover in management and because it's elected and everything. But it doesn't look like there'll be any change this year and I think i- if there's one thing, stability in the Fire Department is is good right now. And I think if if you choose to go design build, I think the people at the Fire Department are ready to help you.
Let's ask, is there a motion on the table for design build?
Could I just ask one more question?
Yeah, I have one.
Jim, from the point of view of your departments, do you feel like they would be able to participate early? The intensity that Jeff's talking about in the design build process, or is this not a good time? Because I mean, I do recognize you're new in your job and I want to, and the people in the Building Department will be new in their jobs potentially.
I I think so, i- if if we were doing it today, the answer would be no. If we're two or three months down the road and we're a little more settled than we are today, I think the answer is yes.
This the initial solicitation to create the interest, we we would try to put it out as soon as possible. So we get a meeting next week. I'm pretty sure we can't put it together next week. So you're looking at at least another month past that, the initial solicitation.
Okay.
The other thing though is with the initial solicitation, looking for the design build teams, we would need the second solicitation for expert to to assist us with the preparation of the proposal packages. To help us to define design build teams, get, gotta give us for finished product. So is that? No, I would, I would run those solicitations in parallel. So the design build, the one, one package, solicitation and the second solicitation would be some architect engineer type team just to help us put the proposal together.
So you would be looking to go out with the RFPs in the May-June time frame?
Yeah, optimistically, yeah.
Yeah, that I think that.
Bob Moore?
Mike, I go back to the dollar sign. The 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 issue is not not the what the total cost is, but the fact is doing a design bill, whoever you contract that with, they have to understand is, uh nothing goes forward unless the town approves. I mean.
Yeah, that would, that would be part of this, that would be part of the solicitation and the proposal statement.
And companies are willing to do that in knowing that
Yeah.
They may never get a debt, they may never get that job. You know, other than to design it. I I I'm asking a question because I don't know the user. And probably I shouldn't be asking you.
No, no, it's it's it is a good question because the design build teams are taking some risk because they're gonna spend some engineering and architectural time doing it. And most design build projects have at least a nominal stipend. So when you shortlist three teams, you say, okay, here's X number of dollars to give us a proposal back. It doesn't cover all the costs because there're gonna be some architecture, there're gonna be some engineering drawings in there. So when we get the packages back, we can look at it and say, okay, that's a beautiful building, but it's cheaply made. This is a butt ugly building, but it's really well made. Analyze it from that standpoint.
I vote butt ugly.
I'm trying, I'm trying to make a point.
Oh, you're right.
It was understood, very well, very understood, very understood. Uh so back to my, go back to my question, if if the conversation can certainly continue after there's a motion on the table, is there a motion on the table to go with design?
I move that we authorize the Temporary Public Building Commission to um explore a design build uh process for the firehouse addition.
I'll second that.
And is that now we have time to comment? Is there more comment on Adam's motion? Uh, Di Pedro? Bob Moore? At this time, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of do, had, asking the temporary building commission to look at design build uh as an option and.
For the firehouse.
For the firehouse addition and
That's it.
Upgrades to the building.
Well, the project, whatever it turns out to be, whether it includes upgrades or not, is my intention and emotion.
I agree.
Very good. I'll I'll, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. And Jeff, do you have, you have some other thought processes?
No, thank you for your time.
Uh I would ask that you talked with Jim and I would like to find a way to get them into also into the um Metro Municipal Center with hard hats on to have them be able to tour the building and. What it, whatever.
So so honestly, I'll, you know, I I don't know that, you know, we initially asked them to work on the Nacho, but we've made decisions that I think kind of negate that. We've decided that we're moving people out of there. We have options for places to put people. We've talked about the fact that we're gonna sever utilities and and mothball that section of the building so we can afford to take it down. Um I think the only thing that we have not ironed out um on the administrative side is what we're gonna do for for missing storage. That's the one piece that we don't have figured out yet.
Yeah, we weren't.
I'm not sure that we really.
I don't, I wasn't, you know, other people wanted to see the the building and I wasn't convinced that we needed to. We're tearing it down.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see a lot of benefit of spending the time to go look around.
Let me, let me ask you this. Was it in the charge?
Yes.
I would recommend that you at least do a walk. I know we can talk about that in case there's some another set of eyes on this. I think it's uh and it's in the charge and I would not like to see it go without.
Yep, Pam. Excuse me. Yeah, uh you know, we've, we've spent money having engineers already look at that building and and we've, I was one that wanted to save it. Gwen and I were kind of pushing that thing to make it our new Town Hall and and renovate it. And when I saw the engineering report, uh I was heartbroken, but it has to come down. There's no doubt about that. There's sections of that building that are pretty much off limits right now. They've been boarded up so that we don't want people in there. I think it's it, we we have made the decision, we're gonna tear it down. There, there's no doubt about that. Uh I don't think it's worth putting people in there, you know, we, I I wouldn't ask our employees to go in there if they didn't have to. I I wouldn't ask the pub, Temporary Public Building Commission to go in there. I think the building is not safe.
Thank you. Let me change the ask then. Does the board have an interest in saying to the Temporary Building Commission that they no longer have to review the demolition of the Nacho Municipal Center? Porch, uh two-thirds of the building.
I'm on board with that.
Yeah, me too.
I think, let them focus on the thing that's the the priority and that.
Adam, would you like to make the motion?
I didn't think tearing the building down was a big deal because I I've done a couple engineering projects where I tore buildings down. It's not that big a deal.
So Adam, do you want to make a motion?
I move that we uh revise the charge to the Temporary Public to instruct them to focus on the firehouse project and defer any examination of Nacho Municipal Center. Until further instructions from the Board of Selectmen.
Bob Moore seconded it? Is there any further discussion? Bob, Di Pedro? Okay, then I'll let. Adam, do you want to comment? I'll call for the vote. Those in favor of changing the charge, all all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Jeff, thank you very much.
Is there anything interesting?
Probably not.
I don't think so.
Thank you, Jim, for your honesty.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. At this time, we're on five feet. Properties, facilities report the Paracchio property lease to Larry Peace, Lawrence Peace. Larry, we did come to the table, sir. We'd like to ask you, come, come visit. How long have you lived in this town, sir?
Seventy years.
Seventy years.
Happy birthday.
Yes, that's right, two Fridays ago.
Very good. Um we have a a question here on the lease to of this piece of property. Uh and how many acres are in that piece of that property?
I don't know.
Forty-eight.
Forty-nine. I don't know if that counts, Rogers. Have a deed, but I can't find it. The deed doesn't tell you the acres.
It did, we have a deed.
We have it here. That's in our, we have another.
And. Would you like to address the board on your question?
Yes, what I'm here to do is to explain the circumstances that uh we've been using that property, my father, my father and I together. And I've been renting myself for the town since nineteen ninety-nine. Um I take care of the whole property. It has extensive roads that go in and three gates. I maintain it. It has eight acres open of farmable land. And the rest is just wood, but there's an extensive road system and gate. That we also maintain. I never asked the town to come, the town come, department or the work gang, the garage to come and help. We just take care of all the open roads, build the gates, keep them clean, lock every night. Um so I've been using that, but it's on a one-year contract. I don't see the contract. He sent me a bill and I pay it once a year. Um what I'm requesting is that for a five-year contract or five-year option. The reason that it's important to the farm, we're using it for sixty-four years, I take care of it. And the way that your um contract was set up with this last uh bid, I guess going off the bid for the property, it doesn't line up with uh farming um in my aspect because the whole property is planted. Come November, December, and I can't wait for January if it went out to bid, which I don't see why you should go out to bid. But I've been here to ask for a five-year contract or five-year option.
Are there questions for Larry?
Not a question, but I I want to add some insight to this. Um since I was on the original negotiating team for the purchase of the property. And Mr. Paracchio in 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 our, in our discussions, you may know, when you read it, you you notice that one of the things that that's in in the uh in the deed itself, it's to be used for agricultural purposes. Well, the first line is agricultural purposes. And in these, our negotiations and discussions, we said it's hope that that it would be continually be used by Larry and his dad or Larry, whomever. Uh as long as they're actively farming. Now, we we did not make that as 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 part of the sales agreement. It was, if you will, a gentleman's agreement. We felt that, sure. He, they've been there, they've taken care of it, there's no reason to do it. We were you know, supportive of trying to maintain as much agricultural in town as we could. And this was just another method of doing it. So came out of it, it was simply a gentleman's agreement. As long as they wanted to use it, we we would rent it. And that's there's no legal anything to that other than that's what it was and I and I don't know, Mr. Paracchio was still.
No, he died.
Yeah, no, he passed away. So obviously you can't confirm that, but that's. Yeah, he passed away. So obviously you can't confirm that, but that's, I just wanted to share that with the board. So, and, and that's a piece of land that is, it's, you know, it's not a hayfield. It's not just a cornfield that you pull mulch in. It, it, it's utilized for, it changes. You don't have the same crop on there all the time, but it's a crop production. It's, and their farm is the only significant farm that is a produced and fruit vegetable farm. Last one. And I think whatever we can to keep it going, we should do it. And knowing that you can have that for a period of time and do your crop rotation based on that, I think that's an important part of making it all work.
Thank you. I have Bob DePietro nodding his head as the other farmer in the, on the, on the board. Would you like to respond? The thumbs up. All right, we got that. Mike Ermid, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Bob Moore is completely correct about the, the origins of when, when the town purchased the Paracchio property and, and the idea of it remaining farming and, and what went on with the Pease family at that time. I have no problem and, and I, I understand the crop rotations and the plans you have to make probably years in advance for where you're going to put certain things. And I have no problem with giving him that type of lease at all.
Thank you, Adam.
I have a couple of questions. One for Larry, which is, what is your time cycle for deciding crop rotations? And that's an issue. What, what is, is it two years? Is it three years?
Well, two years. Yeah, it's just that.
I didn't think it was five.
The planting, no. The planting, the planting of something is, has to be planted, like rye, strawberries. It's a major, major thing to support strawberry, which is my.
We're just adjusting the start time of the lease, take care of that?
You mean?
Meaning it starts in a particular season as opposed to ending in a season that would be inconvenient for you?
No, like the crop is already planted now. I just, I just don't want to be caught up in the, in the big process.
Yeah.
That's why I'm here. I am a real farmer.
Every year.
I am not someone, people, you can have people, because money is just money, but you can have people that have other jobs and, and make a lot more than I do. And in the spirit of time, can be farming. Right? Even though they're passionate about it. I mean, I make my living from this. Sorry, don't cry. You know, I'd say it is. I am a farmer. That's what I do for a living. And not that I need a piece of property, no one else has, should have a right to it. But by the maintenance of it, the way I've showed for 64 years in our family and the Paracchio family, I feel that I should be extended circumstances to a lease that's five years or five-year option.
Adam, do you have another question?
Well, I just, I want to, does the, does charter have a limitation on leases for longer than one or two years? Because it's an interest in land and we couldn't sell property without, without going to a referendum or a town meeting. And I'm not sure that you can lease land for longer. Is it, is it a five-year limitation?
I think it's five. And then, and then it can roll again. There is a section that addresses that.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't think it goes just with land. I think it goes with regular leasing because we have the same issue where we lease the church out. And also the, the.
Also, it was a dollar value of contracts. We were running against where we'd have to submit it. It's a contract. It's also a lease.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lease. But the dollar value is probably, well, anything you've ever done.
If it's an option to him, then it's effectively a 10-year lease, which I think
Was an option.
If there's a five, yeah, it's a five-year lease with a five-year option is a 10-year lease. Because it binds the town for 10 years.
Right.
And I think if, if it's a five-year threshold in the charter, it would have to go to reference.
It's over five years.
Well, the option means it is over.
Yeah, right. That's what you're saying. Right. So if it's straight five years, and we'd want to check the.
I want to check.
Check it out.
Usually.
We, let us review the charter. We hear your ask. And because of their questions that we haven't answered, we'll come back to the next meeting. We'll put on our next agenda. Adam?
I just want to put one more thing out there, which is that the deed restriction is not just for agricultural leases.
Oh, no.
It's for agricultural. It's about four things, one of which is recreational.
Recreational, limiting, we can elect the buildings on it. Yes.
You can't, you can't have other, recreational building. Oh, I mean, I'm not, I, I don't, your history, I understand the history, but it's not the only thing.
I reread it before I got here. I know that those were in there, but as I stated at the beginning, the lead was agriculture. Because it was the intention of somewhere in the future, as the town just grew and it was growing, that we wanted to need more recreational areas. That land would be available for.
Well, at this point then, if with the consensus of the board, we will ask our administrator and administrative assistant to get us the information from the charter so that we can review that. And we'll get back to it. We understand your ask. Do you have flexibility in this?
Yeah, I can understand what Adam's point, if it's that, if it has a referendum, by guaranteeing an option, it would that you'd think, I just try to hang on for five more years and approach the board again, like I am tonight. I know if you're all still here, I can make it. And I'd feel comfortable. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I have one other quick one.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to let us, luckily we know at this point that I contacted, the fire department, Bruce Sticks will be coming forwards, I think, at some time. Talk to you if that's the way they do it about a dry hydrant that they talked about years ago, put it down at Lemon Loomis Road, which is down by Biffers. That's yours. The new complex is going in, neck above me. My property is supposedly an agricultural piece of property. So I hope to do some work on a pond. It's all filled in from the, from the Eric Park sand coming through. And then we'll coordinate with that fire hydrant, which I think is near there. It was discussed before years ago. I guess it was okay. It put down as one of the big places of acceptable. So I call it Bruce. I'm going to get ready here to try to coordinate that. And across the way, Roger Barrett has been talking with the town about putting a small pond on the other side, which would, would, would do there would give you more volume. It would slow the water down coming up from Eric Park, which is the Paracchio property. He's saying Eric Park, it's like the Paracchio property. And by me putting the gates back in, the dam, and filling it back up after I clean the pond, they put the fire hydrant, you'll have double. You'll have, you would have the flow problem with the sand all coming through as a general brook, getting worse and worse and worse. You'd have two reservoirs right there, fire hydrant. Bruce looked at it. He was talking to you about it, about the excesses.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
You guys got it.
Thank you, sir. See you later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to answer, madam chair, it appeared that it's three years is the, is the limitation on it.
Did you hear that, Larry?
Yeah. Somebody coming, my phone, that's like, somebody coming up in this.
Yep, yeah. Thank you.
And I, and I, just for the record, I wouldn't have a problem with a free release. That's not a big deal. And certainly it ought to be at least two because he's got a two-year cycle. So I don't want to screw up his planning cycle. It's not recent.
Are you recommending that we vote on it this evening?
I'd see your pleasure.
No, wait, wait.
We'll wait.
Put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, it'll be on there. And it's not going to screw it up.
Because it already has this year paid up.
Right. So this year's already.
We're going to move on then to five B, small b, regarding discussion regarding using the Bolton Congregational Church for office space. I had the pleasure to be invited to, after an ask, to the Bolton Congregational Church after service church coffee hour, in which it was very well attended to describe the situation that the town was facing when taking down the Nacho Municipal Center and the core conditions for employees that we needed to do something soon to put up a, we were looking, as a board, to put up a temporary office building between the two buildings. I described it. And there was many good questions. How long is temporary? Is there flexibility in this? And how soon will the board be doing it? There are many good questions that came out of the discussion. And then a suggestion came out was, would you consider, or one of the questions was, have you looked around Bolton for other places to rent? But put a space. And so it sort of chuckled around because we know how little rental space there is for offices in Bolton. And then the comment came up, would you consider looking at this building, meaning Chandler Hall, because they had open what I would call Sunday school classrooms or smaller spaces, workspaces, that they were not using at the present time? Would we consider that as something to look at? And at that point, we, I asked them to approach the town with that offer or to come see it. Jim Rupert did. At this point, I'll turn it over to Jim.
So I, I did, I did look at it. You know, the space would, would work. It does have accessibility. A couple of things that we talked about is that, you know, they, they currently don't have a need for those spaces, but when might they in the future? And I thought that our need would, would be probably in at least the five to six-year timeframe. They weren't able to answer that question. We haven't talked about what they would be looking for, for rent. We did talk about some of the things that we would have to address. We would have to, you know, put lockable, you know, we'd have to make the spaces that we use lockable because we have records that we'd have to deal with. We would have to deal with internet connectivity. We would have to deal with phone lines. And the other, the other, the other thing that concerns me is that we really don't have money in the budget for a lease. Right now, we have money in the capital budget for a lease purchase option. We can't use that money for a lease. So I'm not sure how we would fund all of this.
Is there? If, if we were to move forward with this, if there was interest by the board, is there a method? Is there a way for the board to vote on a waiver? To waive? Or make an addendum to change purchase lease to a lease contract? Okay.
Jim?
Yes.
Can't, can't we cancel a project in capital and reallocate funds from capital to another project?
Sure, but where are we going to find the money for all the other stuff?
No, but I mean, well, you said we had.
So right now, we, we have money in, in the cap of budget. And we're, we're at the 1% where we need to be. We, we can't move any money out of that to other things. It could be reallocated to something else by following the appropriate methods as outlined in the town charter. But, but we don't have a line item in any of our budgets in order to be able to pay a lease.
For a straight lease.
So it's, it can't stay in cap. We can't reallocate it to another capital item because a lease is not a capital item.
Right. So the only, the only way we have it in capital right now is because it would be a lease purchase agreement.
Right. Okay. You make.
For the portable classrooms. And that way, if we needed them for more than five years, at that point, they're paid for.
Right.
And probably have some limited resale value if we take care of them in that timeframe.
Yeah, if I may.
Mike, I mean, Bob?
No, I'm the other mic. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
Thank you. Bob?
I think, I think we have to look beyond five years. And, well, I know, I mean.
I was kind of hoping that people would hate him so much that they would vote for it.
That was brought up at the church as a matter of fact.
Right. Well, the, the, the point of it, the point of the matter is, whatever you do, your anticipation is if things go right, it'll be five years. If things don't go right, it could be seven, eight, nine years. And we can't be in it, at the end of four years, if something happens there, we've got to go through this whole thing again. We have a plan, to me, that will deal with an issue beyond the, oh my God, it happens again type scenario, that it can bring us to that five-year period and further, a little further if we have to. And leasing, the, the church thing, no. Adam?
I'm going to just say I would be an absolute no vote for leasing space at the church where we're not taking a whole building. If we're taking a whole building, I could, I could maybe live with that. I have concerns about security, security of records, control of the space, physical security, internet security, and the issue of, you know, the distance from the town hall and people's ability to do things like get to and from the town hall safely, because that's not a particularly safe route, especially in the winter. I'd have concerns about handicap accessibility because churches have certain exceptions that, that town halls don't. And I have grave concerns about putting town offices in a church for obvious reasons.
I heard, I heard that question when it was first brought up.
And not that I have any feeling that the congregational church would be in any way a problem for town employees or for town, for town residents, but I do not think it's appropriate to put a church facility in a town building or a town facility in a church building. And I won't vote for it. And I'll say that right now. I'll be very strongly opposed to it.
Thank you. Bob DePietro?
Well, I tell you, I liked the idea when I first heard it. I think maybe the board as church might be willing to forego to rent in terms of the improvements that we would be making. I heard what Adam said. I would be personally, I like the idea personally, personally speaking. But I heard what Adam said. So Adam, we'll look it out.
Oh, he's good.
Oh, wait a minute. That was a slap moment.
Except it's an owl.
I'm going to protect the owl. Just a little bit of levity. Thank you for that. Mike Ermid, did you have one more comment?
No, I, I, I kind of agree with Bob Moore that we've set a, set a course and and I actually had, when, when I mentioned it to a couple of people that I had heard we were thinking of leasing space at the church, that those people had concerns about church and state separation. I didn't think it was a big deal. I didn't think it was a problem. And it, it, it never struck me as it would be a problem to anybody in town. But if it offended one person, then it, it could be. And I think we kind of set a course and I think we should stick to it.
Thank you. I will add my thoughts on the question before us. One of the issues we should talk about is our employees and the comfort level that the employees that will be placed in that building, if it were to go to Chandler Hall, if there would be a discomfort for them to be in a, in a, not a church, but in a church-owned facility that they use for, they have used for worship when the church was being renovated, but it's not used for worship. And it would be a separate part of the building, but it would not have a separate entrance. It has two egresses and has been renovated for ADA bathrooms and so on and so forth recently. But the question in my mind is if we change employees in the future, say this is a five-year situation, a five-year contract that we were, if we were to come up with it. With that church hall, for the church hall. Would it make a new employee uncomfortable to be in that space? As opposed to a space that is designated rented or lease purchased. Specifically on town property for town function. And that changed my mind. I was at first very interested and I, and I was very grateful for the offer because I thought it was. Very neighborly, which is the reason I had gone to speak to them. And they were trying to look at solutions and trying to find ways to save the town money. Because these people, most of them are town residents who pay taxes here. So we looked at, in, in looking at that, but looking at our employees as those that would use the space. I reflect on what Adam says about the safety of them coming back and forth between the buildings in climate weather. But at this point, I do not have a comfort levels. So I would like to go around one more time. With this board so that we could speak to the church and give them an answer. I think that would be a neighborly thing to do so that they're not feeling that they're out on the, out of lip, waiting, waiting for an answer. Bob Moore, do you have one more comment?
I would say I would thank them for the offer, but quite frankly. Our, the pathway that we're going is, is as far as I'm concerned, it's for the long run, is it better for the top?
I don't, we.
I, I, I join your feeling that the offer itself was neighborly and, and that the church. I'm sure that it was made out of a spirit of community and, and trying to be there for the town and to help the town. And I, I, I don't criticize the church for offering. I just feel that in my, in our roles as stewards of, of this town. We have an obligation to encompass both what our employees might feel, or people who might be required to visit a town office might feel. And. There's to me, and this is perhaps a pet peeve. There, there's a strong conflict between the town's need to control a building where it operates and the, and what goes on in the building. And the activity of, for example, classrooms with children who are being taught religious material. Or were being shown religious material and might be coming in and out of those classrooms at the same time as people who are doing town business. Are going through those same hallways and. I think the church deserves a place where they can carry on those activities appropriately in their own privacy and their own control. And the town needs a location where it can carry on its activities, which are not in conflict, but not consistent with what the church is doing. And when you say that it's not worship. To me, instructing children in, in their religion and in their morals is worship. It's a part of worship. If you really believe in what you're saying, you're worshiping in that act. And it's important that people be able to do that without conflict with the town and with, with civic duties. And, and it's a, it's just a better, safer way for everyone to have what they want and carry on what they do without some. Because all it takes is one confrontation between those two activities and that space to poison a community.
I think you're, you make a very good point. My, my point had been that their, their activities are another time of the week.
But they might not be.
But they might not be.
Somebody might be setting up a classroom or somebody might be visiting classroom. I mean, it, it's important to understand that, that when we make decisions like that, where we mingle those activities. We're not guarding what's, what they need. And they're thinking of this as an offer to the community, but they're not really thinking about what happens if somebody comes in and objects. Then, then the community will feel badly about that. And they'll be, those are the kinds of things that create strife. And we see that kind of strife all over the world, except in this country. And one of the reasons we don't have it up until now, or don't usually have it. Is that we carefully guard the difference between what people do when they worship and what people they do when they govern. And that's really important to me and I think that we should always bear that in mind. I, I'm sorry if I've taken some time on that. I, I feel it's important to explain to a group of people at the church who may feel like they're trying to help and trying to avoid a problem. Why it's important that we not take their off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob DePietro, you want last comment for your?
Would I, would, would I just heard? That'd be tough. Listen. Larry Keys talked about farmers and people who had other jobs. Well, you know, I also taught public schools for about ten, ten years. Sometimes we had portable classrooms and they were the pits. I picture the problem with the parole office. You know, I just, to me, there's something to be said about that too.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Bob. And Michael?
Yeah, I, Adam, you said it as well as anybody could have. I, I. I agree completely.
Thank you. So at this point. Do we have a consensus then amongst the board that we will kindly decline the church's offer? And thank them for their community-minded spirit, but we will not be accepting their offer and we'll be moving forward. For, and you can outline the reasons, Jim, if you'd like, but it's not necessary. Thank you very much. We'll move on then. The silo roof, Heritage Farm, Jim?
There's a new one.
It looks good. It shines. It's beautiful.
We were trying to get it repaired because there was a section of the silo roof that had come off. We had some people look at it. We ended up getting bids for replacement. It was replaced for $5,000.
Considering, considering the cost of building and even getting materials.
Well, we did, we did have to rent them a lift. They were some Amish gentlemen from Pennsylvania that came and put on a new silo roof for us. You know, we, we look, you know, we, we were looking at this because, you know, it was one of those things that came up during the, the Heritage Farm. They've, they've got the consultants that are working on the project right now. And I'm a firm believer if the foundation isn't good, then the roof isn't good, the stuff in the middle don't matter. And so, you know, the foundation on the silo was good. We needed to preserve the stuff in the middle, so we had the funds within John Butcher-Morris's budget. And we moved forward and, and got that done. It was the lowest bid. They did a tremendous job and we're very happy with it. The comment I've gotten is it's shiny. And I said that will change over time.
So give it a year.
I would like to put that out on the Facebook page. Thank you very much. FY21 budget report. Is this something we need to accept or is this just something for review?
It's just for review. I'm guessing some of you at least have had an opportunity to, to look at it. It, it really, it demonstrates that we are on track.
At this point, it says on the totals. Highlighted it where it's 70%, 70.7. Any comments?
63. I'll try to find it. You're doing better. Because I. It's 60.
63.52 expense, which is, it's time of the year.
That's pretty good.
We're, we're in very good shape.
Then we'll move on.
Kathy, there weren't any budget transfers, right?
This is item D.
Or is there one?
Kathy, did you, but do we have budget transfers?
No, there was no budget transfers that I was given.
If there was anything in our package, thank you. I'm going, well, we're going to skip now, go back to item number three, approval of minutes. And if you have read the minutes, I would be open to taking a motion that would accept all of the minutes. And then we can go and make adjustments to any of them. So we can speed things along.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes for January 18th, 2022, January 25th, 2022, January 27th, 2022. February 3rd, 2022, February 16th, 2022, February 23rd, 2022, and March 1st, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael.
There are some corrections.
Adam, would you like to start?
The only comment I would make is in one of the minutes, and I don't know which one it is. But instead of using the last name, I saw L. Who the hell is Adam?
Guilty.
Watch your language, Mr. DePietro.
He's gonna be as bad as I am.
I will just tell you, Mr. DePietro, that you can't put an A period and then teller. Because it thinks that you're labeling things A, B, C. So we don't always have a choice with Adam.
All right, all right, all right.
Thank you, Kathy.
That's the computer expert, Bob DePietro.
The key one I wanted to point out is February 23rd minutes budget workshop. There is a motion on the second page, which is the most important one, where we cut 81,500 from the budget. But it doesn't identify who, who made the motion or who seconded it. And my recollection, it was as Bob Mora and, and that I don't recall who seconded it. And maybe somebody's notes.
I think it was Mike Arum.
So I would, I would.
Mike, was that you that seconded it?
Uh, which one are we talking about?
$81,000 reduction.
On February 23rd.
I believe it was me, yes.
So too, so we correct that.
The motion was made by Bob Mora and seconded by. M. Arum. And it was unanimous vote.
It was unanimous vote.
Is there another one, Adam, that you had?
It's a typo, but it. That was the only one I thought we better.
That's a good point.
It was an actual motion.
Yep.
And the other, the title that I thought.
I don't spell well enough to find those, so I'm happy.
Spell checks for.
I looked at them online, so I didn't have a pen handy to make it up.
Corrections, I'll just ask a little more time. Bob, Mike Arum, did you have corrections?
Nope.
Bob DePietro?
I'm good.
All right, then I'll ask the.
Yeah.
For all of them, I remember that now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Well, the motion passes unanimously to accept all of these minutes with the correction. Going on to ongoing business.
Did you want to do 4B?
Hey, now that we got Mike Arum back, thank you very much. We're going to go back to 4B, Tim Johnston, the reappointment to the Ethics Commission. Bob Moore made the, made the comment that Tim was there at the origination of the commission. And he would like to be reappointed. May I have a motion?
Is it Tim Johnston or Tim Johnson?
Johnston.
It's Johnston, right? So.
J O H N S T O N.
I look at it so often, I don't.
Attorney Johnston?
Yeah.
Okay. But it, when I sat down, I was thinking, who is that?
Thanks, Secretary. She's got to learn how to spell, I'm telling you.
Bobby, did you make a motion?
I did, I made a motion.
And did we have a second?
You did, Bob.
We did.
And we're waiting for Mike Arum, so we'll come back to that. Is there any other comments? Now, Mike, you've got a microphone?
Yeah, I'm all set. No, I have no problem.
All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Tim, for coming back.
Then we have a three minute recess.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I need a break.
Recording stopped.
Started at, started at six.
Yvonne, are you there?
I'm here.
Comment was the director that you, it was me. I typed it.
Yeah, I figured that. I, I think one of them. And the, the A teller thing, it's A period, no space teller, and that works.
Yeah, that's how I figured that out. I was having a problem with it before, so yeah, I'm right there with you.
You may start.
Thank you. The meeting has reconvened. Thank you for your patience. Number six, ongoing business, Mr.
So this is a really simple one for those of you who are continuing on the board and not new to the board. Building Safety Month is something that we ask you to do almost every year. May is Building Safety Month in accordance with the International Code Council. Some years, we, we, we get not only our local governments, but the state government also declared May Building Safety Month. And for us typically, what we do is we will take some of the information from ICC and we'll use that. To put in our Bolton bulletin so that people are aware that, you know. The purpose behind building codes is for, it really is about public safety and making sure that. The built environment is safe for those who live, work, and recreate in it.
So let's consider putting that out on the Facebook page too, and we can do something, we'll piece on that.
Sure. So if you're, if you're of a mind to, we would love to see a motion where the Board of Selectmen declares May Building Safety Month.
I entertain the motion.
So moved.
I was waiting for the guy who builds to make the motion.
Bob Mora, the appraiser? All right, is there any other comments? All right, then I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 No opposition, we have it passed unanimously, thank you. B, bridge and local, I'm sorry, state and local bridge grant and ARPA funding.
So we have an opportunity on April first, the state and local bridge program opened up. And the the two projects that we could have ready to move forward into the state and local bridge program are the Lyman Road Bridge, which is truly a culvert, and the Hebron Road Bridge, which is truly a culvert. The state and local bridge program does require fifty percent match. The project on Lyman Road is about one point two million dollars. So that would use up a very significant, I don't see that we have a funding source for the match other than ARPA funds. That would use up a significant portion of our first amount of ARPA funding that we have received. And I did take this a little bit further. You know, Pam and I have discussed this a little bit during her visits to the office. Uh, so we did take this a little bit further. We have, uh, Rob Eloise at CROG, who used to work for DOT. I had conversations with him about this. And I said, you know, what are your thoughts here? You know, what should we do with these two bridges? His thought is that, um, we are more likely to get funding through the infrastructure monies that will be coming at a later date from the federal government for the Hebron Road Bridge because it is in a road classification that is appropriate for those funds. He felt that we had a very good chance of getting funding for the Lyman Road Bridge under the state and local bridge program based on the bridges rated by percentages. And so based on that percentage, he felt it fell in the, in the, um, in the right area for that. We also know from some of the informational sessions that Pam and I have been in both together and independently that one of the things that we may be able to get money for from the federal government through the infrastructure grants is the waterline project that we had talked about using ARPA funds for. So the question really is a matter of how we want to use those funds and do we want to put forward this project under the state and local bridge program? We have the paperwork and application ready to go. It's, at this point, it's simply a signature for me and we can submit it. But it it does, you know, it does have an impact on on the use of those funds.
So we have half of the ARPA money in hand, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, and that is the money of which you you are interested in looking at for the match money for the Lyman Road project.
That's correct.
Is there any question on, let's start with the Lyman Road projects. Any question on the Lyman Road project, Michael?
Yeah, uh, first, are we looking to just replace a culvert or are we looking to replace it with a bridge?
So it would be replaced in kind. Um, with, but it would be a box culvert at this point, not a corrugated metal culvert.
Okay, so it'd be concrete as opposed to steel and 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 all of those things. Hey, my next question is I was interested in extending our waterline or a waterline to enhance development in the area, one of the few areas that we have for development. And I'm sitting here right now trying to weigh those two. Is the Lyman Road culvert pipe in a condition that it's is it in a situation where we could wind up with the same kind of situation we had on Mark Anthony in the near future? I don't know what the rating is on it.
Let me make one clarification for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Make sure we're thinking on the same page. It's not that we're not looking at doing the waterline, we're just looking at doing it with the next large pot of federal money from the infrastructure. And so at this point, we're just addressing the money we have at hand, the seven hundred and fifty thousand, and then we can get the second seven hundred and fifty thousand and using the first piece for the Lyman project and then addressing the Hebron Road and the waterline through the infrastructure.
But we, but we have the available funds now for the waterline infrastructure, if we went that way. And if we, if we choose to reallocate it to Lyman Road, we'll have to apply for a different grant to fund that, correct?
So I, so the Pam is correct in that the amount of money we've currently collected is half of what we anticipate, and it is just shy of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We will get the other payment at some point in the not-too-distant future based on the numbers that were created when Bob Mora and his team looked at this several years ago. They were looking at about one point two million dollars then. So we would still be looking for other funds, even with the entire amount of the ARPA funding to be able to complete this project. But but I think we we had at that point in time, we had some private partners that were willing to invest. And my hope would be, as we march down the road a little bit further, that, you know, some of those private partners would have continued interest in helping us to complete this project.
The project you're talking about is a waterline.
Waterline, correct. So we, there's not enough money to do both. We we would be reliant in order to get the waterline in on the federal infrastructure money that is supposed to be coming down the pipe in the not-too-distant future. It is a a bit of a gamble. There's no guarantees that we'll get that funding. We would work absolutely very hard to try to get that. So you you're, you know, you're you're right, Mike, you know, that 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 infrastructure, that ARPA money gets us a long ways toward getting the waterline in. And and the premise that I brought it to you under was, you know, that I felt that by bringing the waterline in, we'd be investing those funds in the future of Bolton in a way that, you know, might pay us back over time with, you know, business investment in that area. You know, we have the sewer line, you know, with the waterline there, it makes it much more palatable for development of businesses along those lines. And my feeling and my thought, uh, when I asked you guys to consider that was that, you know, it it would, you know, help us to build a better tax base in Bolton over time. The the, at the end, the other part of your question, I don't have the bridge paperwork in front of me, but my recollection is that, uh, the bridge is about seventy percent, and that's seventy percent to the good, not to the bad.
We have some time.
We still, we still have time. It's not in, it not in, not in dire straits. Uh, Hebron Road Bridge, you know, is probably in the, in the same realm, but that's had some patchwork done. Uh, I did talk with our engineer and, uh, Lyman Road is not a candidate for relining like we did on on Rico Road. Uh, it really does need to be replaced. But it's a, you know, it's not only is it a financial decision, it's kind of a philosophical decision at the same time.
So if I'm just, um, yeah, this one has been bouncing in and out of the, uh, from one hollow side to the other. Jim brings up a point I was going to ask, and that is, is the, uh, if you will, the culvert issue on Lyman Road an imminent issue that has to be? It is not. It there's, I mean, it is not in that condition yet. I I frankly would feel more comfortable in holding this seven hundred and fifty thou, uh, hundred and fifty thousand towards the water project when we get another batch of money in. Perhaps we can reapply with a bridge man at that time, depending on how much we get and and be able to deal with that issue because we will, we will be able to deal with that bridge, culvert, whatever. Maybe not this year, next year, or following year after that. The opportunity of being able to bring water system up is probably, that's a narrow window.
It's a rare opportunity.
Yes, a rare opportunity. And and I I would hate to see and for the community's sake and for the sake of the taxpayer, I'd hate to see that opportunity get missed. So I I, at this time, I I think we should hold off on it and and that, there's a great thought they had on on the Hebron Road.
On what?
On the Hebron Road, using the different, that other source that's coming down, but keeping the seven hundred and fifty. See where we are five, six, seven months from now, we can make a better decision.
And there's, there's nothing when the, and after I speak, Mike Aramita's got his hand up. But there there's nothing keeping us when the federal infrastructure money comes down the pipe for applying for both.
Right.
Uh, because one of the things that Pam and I recognized when we, uh, were at the cost meeting and had the presentation from Mark Foulton is they actually had a specific, um, program for culverts. And this would, in in, we're not sure what the rules are yet, but it would prob, both of these would probably either, uh, comply to either the bridge portion or the culvert portion. So I don't think either would be excluded, and we could certainly apply for both at that time.
Bob DePietro, do you have a comment?
I'm wondering, how long will we have access to that seven hundred and fifty thousand?
In the bank.
That's a long time.
Uh, I mean, we we do have, we do have to, you know, we do have to commit to a project here in the not-too-distant future. And, uh, you know, we we have, we've started reporting on it. Uh, obviously, we haven't done anything with the money. You know, we've, we've talked about the direction that we've, you know, wanted to go. But this is the first time we've really had, you know, this conversation since the change in the board. It it took place in November, you know, really to this depth. You know, it was the desire of the board back before we had a change in some of the members to pursue the waterline project. Indeed, we have been pursuing it. If your decision tonight is to continue to pursue that, I I will be pursuing that more aggressively, uh, from this point forward to really try to, you know, move, move the needle in the direction of trying to make this project happen. The students from UConn have really been working very hard and facilitating the design of a pump station. One of the things that we've been racking our heads about all year long is who the engineer was that came up with a conceptual design in the past. We finally found that guy. His name is Ray Myet, and he happens to be a Bolton resident who is an engineer for the Manchester Water Company. So we finally found the guy who's got all the information.
Wow.
Which is one of the things that I've been racking my, I've been, uh, Bob will tell you, I've tagged him several times. Who was it? Who had the information? We've reached out to everybody we could think of. Nobody thought of this individual, including the director, the current director of the Manchester Water and Sewer Company. He he didn't know that it was one of his employees that had done all this work.
I don't mean to rush you, but the hour is thin lately. We have an executive session to work on after.
Quick, 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 quick. If we were to apply for this bridge grant, are we obligated to take it?
No.
Okay.
But it does, it, but it doesn't look good if we get it.
And turn it down. Yes, okay.
Right. So you're never going to be able to apply again.
Yeah, no, okay. I'm just curious, that's all.
So at this point, I would ask for a motion.
I move that we not, uh, not apply for the bridge, uh, grant.
At this time.
At this time. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion? Bob DePietro? Thank you. Are there any further comments? All right, then I will ask for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Adam abstained. Pretty soon. Thank you, uh, uh, four in favor, one abstained. Sorry to have rushed you along, Mr. Rupert. Do you want to talk about the town meeting date and location?
Well, we have a couple of different, different things we've got to deal with. Uh, one is that we need to look at reallocating funds in the capital budget uh, for a school project. And we did some research with with respect to that in accordance to the town charter, what we have to is have a special town meeting to move those funds, and we are proposing that we have that meeting on April nineteenth at six thirty P M here at the Bolton Town Hall.
Uh, did you say seven P M?
Six thirty.
Why six thirty?
Because there's something else going on later in the evening. It's a very busy month.
Yep.
And what is the school project?
So the, in the, in the capital budget, there is a line item for a project for a locking system that they, it was a match for a grant that they've applied for a couple of times, and they have not been successful. Uh, what they really want to do is put in a master key system and change some of the locks. And because this money was allocated specifically for a match for a grant and has not been reallocated to another project in order to use the money for that purpose, it needs to be done so in in a town meeting. Had we caught this when the Capitol Committee was meeting, the Capitol Committee could have done it at that point. Uh, but that didn't come up until after the fact. And so in order for them to have access to those funds, we have to do this.
I said, Bob DePietro?
How much?
The, the project, the project that they are looking to do is around forty, forty-nine thousand dollars. And there is more money than that in that project in the capital budget.
Are there any further questions? Mike Aramita, would you like to make a motion that we have a town meeting on April nineteenth at six thirty?
So, so be it.
Second.
Bob Mora wants to second it. Adam, do you have a comment? Then if there are no further comments, uh, I would ask for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it is unanimous, five. Thank you very much. Going on to D, consider an act on the town meeting dates and location, uh, April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two at the Town Hall.
So this was, this was a misprint. We don't need to consider or act it as the public hearing for the town budget.
We, we don't need that.
It's really just for informational purposes.
Town, public here. Thank you for the clarification. No further questions. We'll go on to E, consider an act on the referendum date and location.
So the date that we are suggesting that is, is in conformance with the town charter and does not create deadline issues for notification or anything else is May twenty-fourth. And the registrars have informed us that they have booked the parish hall at Saint Maurice Church for those purposes.
Are there any questions for Jim at this time? Are there a referendum date?
Do we have to pay for that?
No, they, we, we, we tried to pay for it last year, Bob, and they would not let us. We did end up, because we voted on multiple occasions, we did end up having to do a little bit of cleaning maintenance over there. And we, we, we gave them some supplies to replace some supplies that we had utilized while using the space. But they refused to take payment. All we have to do, all we had to do last year was provide a a form and our insurance information.
Any further questions?
Good.
And so at this time, I would ask for a motion, uh, the referendum date of May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
And the location.
And the location at Saint Maurice's.
In time.
From six A M. until eight P M.
Like that's set by law, but.
Okay.
Adam, did you want to make a motion?
Nope.
I think Bob the Peter just did.
I said, Bob Peter wants to make a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Mike Aramita in seconds. Thank you very much. Any further comments? Now call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Thank you.
No.
Adam abstain. Consider and possibly act on the beginning, give back amount for the Board of Finance. Jim?
So Jill and I have done some work. And we have identified, um. First thing she did was encumber funds that she knew. Um, and we have identified funds in administrative payroll, uh, assessors payroll. Medical insurance, unemployment, workers' comp. Insurance waivers. Um, payroll for town building operations, resident trade state trooper. Um, senior in social services. Public health. And the highway department that we don't believe will be expended this year. Um. Those, and I think it's important for the reasons, you know, we had some changes in staff. We have a new assistant assessor that's paid at a lower rate at ninety percent. We have some unfilled positions. We don't have as many individuals that were eligible for unemployment. Uh, costs, some of our costs for insurance came in under budget. Individuals receiving health waiver stipends left. Uh, we had an unfilled position. In the uh. A shared position between the senior center and and recreation. And right now, we currently have one resident state trooper in the state troopers that we've had. Since trooper content left have been at a lower rate. Um. The, the funding amount that we've identified as available at this point is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Is this an item we act on tonight or is this just for reference?
This isn't, this is an item that we promised the Board of Finance that we would discuss and act on this evening. Because it is, it is going to start making a difference. Now, they're going to have to start making some hard decisions about the budget. And the amount of funds that we give back will have an effect on what they may potentially cut.
So we're making it available as unexpended funds for their, for their revenue.
Correct.
So I move that we return a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Is it a hundred and seven?
One tw- one twenty-nine.
One twenty-nine, seven.
Thank you. One twenty-nine, one two nine, seven. Okay, uh, and is there, is there a second?
I second.
Adam second.
You go, go ahead.
Adam second. Uh, further discussion. Mike Aramita?
Nope.
Bob Moore? And I'll call for a vote. Do you say aye?
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Thank you.
Excuse me, um, Jim, when you guys did the meeting dates, did you do the annual town meeting or just the special town?
It's on my notes, but I haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, sorry.
We're gonna take it up right now. But Jim?
If I'm talking, can you text Rich Barker?
What do you want me to say?
I, I would tell him to join at any, any minute. I don't, I don't think it's going to take us long to get through the rest of this stuff. Uh, so the annual, so the, so we also have to have an annual town meeting, uh, which we have to hold before. May twentieth is my recollection. And we looked at all of the available dates. And what our suggestion is, is to do it on May third at six thirty P M. at Bolton Town Hall. Which is the date of your regularly scheduled May meeting.
At seven o'clock?
No, we, we would hold the annual town meeting at six thirty. And have the Board of Selectmen's meeting at seven P M.
I'll make the motion.
The date again, please?
May third, six thirty P M. At the town of Fall, at the Town Hall before the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Well, Mike made the motion.
Yep.
I second.
We have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Now, call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
We're on G to the Bolton Road Race.
And the road race, um, May, uh, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, you have a letter in your packet for commenting on how successful it was. And I would like asking for permission to be able to book out for, with proper. Insurance and so on, go forth and security, uh, that for March twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Is there? Any conversation on this? Mike Aramita has moved it. Do we have a second already? Adam seconded it. Is there more conversation? Then I'll call for a vote. If everyone's comfortable, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have passed unanimously and please thank them for their efforts because it's a very popular event in town. H, discussion and possible action regarding the valid term for transfer slash recycled tickets.
So I'll give you some introductory remarks and I'm going to turn it over to Kathy. Um, if you'll indulge her for a moment because she's the one that deals with this. With the start of. For the start of the COVID pandemic, we needed to learn how we could do things remotely. And one of the things that we were able to do is to take the software that we pay for, for building and land use. And leverage it to also do online purchasing for the transfer station tickets. So the problem that we have now is we're running two systems. And it is time consuming and cumbersome. And we really just need to move. Uh, to the online system, which still can be done if somebody chooses to come into the office. Kathy can help them at her desk to do it online or there's a kiosk in the land use office where it could be done. And Kathy is literally spending hours before every transfer station event. Trying to reconcile records. And so at this point, if you'll indulge us, I'm going to let Kathy speak about it for a few minutes.
Kathy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so as Jim said, when COVID started, we went to this online system where you can purchase. A transfer recycle station ticket. It is a four punch ticket, just like the old ones. Um, you pay for it online and you print it. Um, and you bring it to the transfer station. Um. Unlike before, we were physically taking the tickets and punching them and they were small little cards. What's printing out now is a full piece of paper. Um, and some people aren't even printing them out. They're just leaving them on their phone so that they can show them to the guys at the transfer station. And what's happening is every other week I print out a listing of all of these purchased online. Um, the problem is that they are four-year tickets. They are good for four years. You get four punches. You can use the four punches in a day. You can use them in a week. You can use them in a year or you have up to four years. And the problem that's coming into is that we are just. We still have tickets from two thousand nineteen right now that still have numbers on them. So our list is getting longer and longer. Last week for the start of the transfer station opening, we had a thirty-four page listing of numbers. And what's happening is the guys, it's slowing down the guys because they have to go through this list manually. Look for that number and that person. Mark off how many punches they have left after this visit. And they do this for the whole time they're there and then the list comes back to me and I manually have to go back in and put it into the computer system. And that's just with the ones that are in the computer because now we are also keeping track of the regular cards. That are still out there from two thousand nineteen and we are still using some of those. When we're in a pinch and we have a problem with the system or somebody can't get into the system and we want to help somebody right away. Um, and it's just becoming a very, very cumbersome. Event for us. And it is literally taking me, like Jim said, on average, two and a half to three hours every other week. Just to go in and do all of this paperwork. So one of the things that we came up with is maybe if we could just bring the tickets back to a one-year ticket. You still have your four punches. Um, the ticket is still worth the same. It's just it must be used within a, within a year's time. This way, we're cutting back on the amount of tickets that are going to be out there. Um, and starting fresh. At some point, I truly believe we need to revisit the whole thing, the. Payment source, all of it. I, I don't know if it would be easier if we went to stickers like other towns have gone. And do just a yearly fee or something. Um, but this process has become very, very cumbersome for everybody involved. In doing this transfer station.
Any questions for Kathy? Mike Aramita?
Yeah, I still have some of those tickets, Kathy.
Yeah. Yours are canceled, Mike.
Oh, okay. Uh, you know, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to have a one-year expiration on it because it. It, it doesn't take much to use up a ticket of four punches. It really doesn't. Uh, the others, you know, I have a ticket, I have a, a sticker in my windshield because I go to Manchester. And they collect the money right there, which is beyond our capability. You know, we're not going to be using Visa cards and everything else at the transfer station. You talk about slowing things down. So I think the punch card system, the, the system we have is. Is good enough for us and not too cumbersome for us, but I think you're right, uh, you know. It's time I got rid of some of my old tickets and 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 moved into the, the. And stopped you from having to do all that work. And I don't think one year is unreasonable.
Thank you, Mike. Adam?
Instead of having punch cards, why not just have the, the ticket the issued was four sections? And you tear off a section and give it to them. And then they just, it has a unique number on it. And one, two, three, four, and that comes back and it's got, once it's used, it's got. Right? As long as it's tagged off somewhere.
Uh, are, there's two issues with that right now. Right now, we're. We think that might be able to be done in our system. We haven't been able to make it happen yet. And number two, like I said, some people aren't even printing them out. They're just keeping. The electronic copy on their phone and showing their phone to the guys so that they don't lose the piece of paper.
And the guides are checking off the, the boxes on their piece of paper, correct?
Right. So it's automatic.
They don't have like a tablet at the, at the station where they could just enter that themselves and click.
We, we talked about that. We also, we also talked about, you know, doing Q R codes and using a Q R code reader. And the, the problem is they're, they're trying to also help people unload their vehicles to keep the line moving. And we just, we don't have that much staff.
How long does it take to, to do a Q R reader? It takes ten, five seconds?
Well, they were also afraid to lose them.
Yeah.
You know, set them down because they're helping somebody. They get, they get broken or thrown away accidentally. We, we, we might not be able to solve this problem in the, in the time we have tonight, but. What's that?
You could do that itself.
Yeah. Um, but you know, we may not be able to solve this problem tonight, but, uh, we really. Uh, really need to think about this and, you know, Kathy thought that the one-year expiration would be a place to start.
How's the station track staff? Is it, how many people?
It's usually.
One person.
That's the issue. You, you have one doing it all.
Right.
Is this something Kathy, you want a decision tonight? Can we bring it up?
I would love a decision tonight. If you can't do it, you can't do it, but the season has started. So this is a time-consuming project that is now ongoing every other week for us.
I have one co- one concern and I'd like to run it by Adam thought process. In Connecticut, we have, um. A coupon law that says, once you've purchased something, a coupon.
It's a gift card.
Yeah, gift card.
That's for gift cards. I don't think that applies. And we're not a private, I'm, I'm pretty sure that only applies.
Private.
To, to trades or businesses. I, I'm okay with reducing it to a year and telling people, I mean, it might be, I don't know how. I'm not sure that everybody would use their card within a year, so there'd be a lot of, but. One of the things that does is to make sure we're only selling these to, to residents, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So one of the things that does is it means that, you know, somebody can't move out of town and three years later come back.
True, very true.
It used to be one year, right Kathy?
I'm sorry?
It used to be one year?
Uh, not since I've been here, no.
We're not talking about retroactively affecting the existing cards, just new cards, right?
Right, just new cards. So obviously, we have a three-year ban here, two thousand nineteen to right now, that we're going to have to move forward with. Because we've already handed them out and they're dated.
Right.
Um, so we would still have to move forward, but at least. Moving forward with a year, we're cutting back on some of the amount that we're working on and at some point, it's going to become less.
Alright, so let me just, well, excuse me. One question. If we go to a year, do you have to have it, that one year is four? Can you just say? You go to one year, it's two. So if you want to go another two, you just get another ticket.
Get it. I was thinking that that.
Yeah, you could do that. Shorten it down instead of you having to use that.
Right.
That four punch in, in your one.
How much are four punches now?
Twenty, it's twenty-four dollars, so it's six dollars a punch.
So.
But it, but it's really based on what you're bringing in. So a car. A regular sedan going in with a trunk full is considered one punch. A small, um, pickup or S U V, that would be considered two punches. A full-size truck, full-size truck bed would be considered four punches.
So it's, it's volume-based.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not weight, but volume.
But they could buy more tickets.
Right.
Yes, they can always buy.
If we're going to one, why not, to one year, why not just make them one per, one per ticket? One punch per ticket.
Or is that more of a opinion?
That's kind of a pain because you don't know what you're actually going to get charged when you get. Sometimes it's, it's one, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three. It's kind of discretionary to the person that's working down there. And I think, I think the four punch system has worked very well as far as being able to go in there and cover what you want to do. And I don't think it's a big problem if I have one punch left over at the end of the year and I lose it. It, you know, it's. It's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose that. That system favors the town because you get, you might get a number of six, six buck forfeitures. I don't know how many people would object to that. I don't have a.
No, me neither. I didn't realize that till it was twenty-four.
It's six.
Yeah.
Uh, I, well, why don't we? Not beat this horse to death, so. And I'm prepared to move that we modify the system for. Issuing transfer and recycle tickets to make each ticket valid for no more than one year and for four punches. No more than four punches.
And I have a second, Bob Peter?
Yeah.
Is there further conversation?
Nope.
Then I'll call for a vote.
Yeah.
If Kathy's happy.
That's a very high priority.
Thanks, Bob.
Kathy's happy, yeah, we're all happy.
I appreciate you guys keeping her happy.
Thank you.
Very good. So could I have a vote, please? All in favor, please say aye. Say aye. We have unanimous votes.
Thank you.
Most welcome. Thank you for sticking in tonight. Consider and possibly act on the alcohol and cannabis ordinance. Uh, with us tonight, also join us online. We have, uh, town attorney, uh, Richard Barker. Thank, good, good evening, sir, and, and welcome aboard, uh. Would you like to address this first?
So, so sure, you know, based, based on the public comment and the comment that I received from. The Board of Selectmen, I did a redraft of the alcohol and cannabis ordinance. Um, I did send that off to Attorney Barker, who made a, a couple of comments on the redraft. And also reiterated that he felt that, you know, we should. Um, have, that we're required to have a, uh, a review board and he suggested that. You know, we modeled that after, uh, the town of Woodbridge's, uh, existing one. Um, we haven't done that piece of it yet. We haven't done that piece of it yet, but I did want to get this back before the board of selectmen so that you could look at it and react to it. Again, we're not under a serious time constraint here. Our goal is to get this potentially completed prior to the opening of, you know, our parks for the season, which typically happens around the time that school gets out. You know, the other thing too is, you know, one of the things that you will need to decide as a board is whether or not you think the changes are substantive. And we would need to hold another public hearing with regard to those changes. Attorney Barker, did I miss anything important?
Not that I could discern, like Jim, I, I, if you're going to have another hearing, you can do the, you could do the tweaks to this ordinance and also get your procedural stuff lined up for the citations when hearing. That's, that's a separate ordinance.
Right, that would be a separate ordinance.
Giving people a moment to digest. But if someone would like to speak?
I'd prefer to handle this at another time.
Yeah.
Late hour?
Yeah.
That and because I don't have my notes on the original draft, so I'm not sure whether it is procedural or substantive changes. I'm, I'm uncomfortable creating an ordinance that requires a board of appeals when the town doesn't have a board of appeals, although I recommend you probably already have one, have a, an ordinance that requires.
We do, yeah.
And yet we don't have a board.
Well, we don't have a board of appeals.
So I don't want to compound that problem.
Deal with both.
And I, I don't have my notes on the.
And that would also frankly, if we, you know, if we put this, if we table this piece off till, you know, the next meeting, that would give me an opportunity to, to do the appeals portion of this.
Right.
I'll accept the motion to table for this meeting.
Motion table.
Thank you, Adam. Second, it's not debatable. All in, a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will come back to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we going into executive session?
I just want to give, under the first segment's report, evolving COVID, I'm not going to address that at the moment. And I'm going to skip right over to B. We had a branding committee, a, a meeting that brought some new members to the committee up to speed. And the decision was made to look at a coordinated branding approach that would coordinate with the current slogan for the town, the current images that are out there on the welcoming sign to Boltons and the other logos that are out there. And we're going to meet again later next month. So that's all I have to say on that. And administrator officers report, would that be something that you could?
I would just ask if there's any questions.
Are there any questions you've got? It's April highlights and Losip Grant, Connectivity Grant, is there anything with Losip that you need to talk about?
So Losip is moving, moving along. We anticipate that that project will move forward with the Connectivity Grant. That, that grant unfortunately had gone stale. So I did reach out with a letter to the state of Connecticut. And we were granted the extension for the Connectivity Grant.
A special thank you to Jim for doing that. We appreciate that.
They have, they have asked that we give them quarterly updates, which we're prepared to do. And I have no other.
Thank you. At this time then, I would take a motion, accept a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation regarding the sixty-five Shatty Mill Road address.
And to include you.
And then would be. Town attorney, Rich Barker, that would be included in motion.
Ms. Madam Chairman, I move that we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and strategy regarding six and, and legal advice regarding sixty-five Shatty Mill Road, poitrification, zoning and weapons decisions and actions. And that that executive session include the administrative officer and the town council.
Thank you, Adam. I need a second.
Second.
You, Mike Aramita, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's passed unanimously. At this time, I would ask that the recording be turned off and we will reconvene at the end of the executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Who actually seconded? I got to tell you. All three of us.
Yeah.
I have executive session. We have a motion before us to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Good night, all.
It is nine fifty.